How the session is going to go? This session is going to be for 90 minutes. LT Uncle will give a foundation for this subject, Bible study on worship for the first 10 minutes. And after that, we'll open it for a lot of questions and answers. I have a set of questions, I'll pose it on to LT Uncle. And he'll build on the foundation that he started with. And he'll build on based on the questions that I ask. So we'll have the session for 90 minutes. So the next, I'll open it for LT Uncle, what do you, LT Uncle?
Let me frankly tell you why I have been chosen to speak. I thought it was going to be a young people's meeting, but I see veterans like David Dean and Prakash and LC. So it's lovely to be in the company of people who are more or less my age. But I'm going to say something in these first 10 minutes, which will also incidentally answer some of your questions. But first of all, let me say that worshiping God is a journey. It is not a technique. And it is something that you learn over a long period of time as you begin to see more and more of God. You see more and more of yourself, you see more and more of the needs around you. Your whole way of singing, writing, all that will change. But I want to tell you something, after reading the latest questions that Meghast sent to me, maybe late last night or this morning, I have come to the conclusion that one thing has to be made very clear when we talk about worship. Worship is focused on God. Now, I want to give a simple example, which is given by a very famous scientist turned philosopher. He lived in the middle of the last century in England, he was a Hungarian. And he talked about two aspects in all our lives. One is called the focal dimension and other is the tacit dimension. The best example is when you learn to ride a bike. Your focal point is how to keep balance. And where you want to go, it is tacit. But as you learn to develop, it becomes a reflex action for you, a second nature. Then your focal dimension is where you want to go. And the tacit dimension is how you psycho. When it comes to worship, many of the questions are about tacit dimensions. What should we do? What kind of songs we should sing? But I do want to correct that the focus of worship is God. We sometimes go on singing because some people have not yet come to the meeting. So I recall them worship songs. So I think we have to be a bit careful that when we use the word worship, we are actually talking about focusing on God. Now, once you begin to understand that, many of your questions will fall into respective places. One of the things is which part of your life is worship? You know nowadays, this praise and worship has become part of, we worship in a Methodist church in Pune. And we have a praise and worship time, 10, 15, 20 minutes. After that, sermon is not part of worship. Reading the scripture is not part of worship. So that kind of bracketing our lives should be dispensed with. So I understand that what you are talking about, you want me to kind of address issues is about the time that we spend in worship. But we must understand that that is part of a much bigger picture. Paul could even go to the extent of saying, 1 Corinthians 9, whether you eat or drink, do all to the glory of God. So there is no part of your life which is secular, everything is sacred, as you heard me say during my session on work. So I think we have to begin to see that that is very important. The moment you make God the focal dimension of your worship, there are several things that will automatically fade into the background. Now, I'm sure all of you have said it, I have said it, I'm a musician of sorts. Did Trinity College London in music, in piano, in theory. And my wife and I nowadays, we are all locked down, it's a good time for us to sing, just the two of us. And that's quite an enjoyable experience. But let me tell you, after a good time, I mean, we have really approached the presence of God. Have you not said, we have had a good time? Have you said it? Let me see some heads nodding, shaking, something. You know, because the moment you say that, you've already lost the plot. Worship is about what you give to God. What you get out of it is pure fringe benefit. You're not going to even talk about it. You learn to think like that, then so many other issues that you have raised in your questions will begin to solve themselves. Worship is focused on God. And therefore, there is something unselfconscious about worship. That means we are conscious of God, which is why some of our songs have to be written to concentrate on God. Many of the songs that we now call worship songs are actually praise and thanksgiving songs. They are also part of your worship. But worship is something above and beyond praise and worship. See, technically, thanksgiving is what I give to God, either individually or corporately, for what he has done for us. In fact, I remember a joke given by an Englishman, a brethren missionary to India. I was a student in 1963, I think it was. And Silas Fox, he gave us a joke because he said that we people don't even distinguish between prayer and thanksgiving. He talked about a missionary who was going through the jungles of Africa. And suddenly, he came across a lion. So he knelt down, closed his eyes and started praying. When he opened his eyes, he saw the lion praying also. So the missionary asked the lion, are you a Christian lion? You're also praying. The lion said, I'm not praying, I'm giving thanks. Thanks for the lunch. So I think there is a difference between prayer and thanksgiving. But praise is what God has done generally. For example, some of the songs are praise songs, praise him for nature, praise him for his creation. But worship is something which is exclusive appreciation of God, without necessarily anything that you have received from him. Those of you who have been with me in earlier sessions, I've been using two words about reading the Bible. We are reading the Bible for utilitarian and therapeutic reasons. What I meant by that was, we read the Bible to see what we can get out of God, which is essential. I mean, even the very breath that we breathe is from God. And the other is utilitarian, how to make use of God to get things done for you. Now, if you limit your reading of the Bible only to that, that itself tells you what is missing in our lives. We have to begin to appreciate God for what he is. Let me give you an example, we are all familiar with this hymn, Holy, 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 by Bishop Reginald Heber. Now, if you read those four stanzas, you will find that there is hardly anything that he talks about which we are receiving from God. He's just stating who God is. Another familiar hymn is, Oh Worship the King All Glorious Above, written by Sir Robert Grant. Sir Robert Grant was governor in Bombay here. And he's in fact buried in our city of Pune. And in fact, one stanza of that song is what you see when you go even now, of course, you don't drive, ride horseback, like the governor must have done. When you go by train from Pune to Bombay during monsoon, when you see the monsoon clouds and the water coming down the slopes of the hills, there's a beautiful stanza, Thou thy bountiful care, what tongue can recite? It breathes in the air, it shines in the light, it sweetly distills in the rain, and so on and so forth. He describes something in nature which also glorifies God. So I think therefore, when we talk about worship first of all, do not be self-conscious. You know, there is one question about whether dancing is okay. Now, Prasan, can you just remind me, what is that, I'll dance as David danced? Can you just give me the lyrics or cite from memory? Because the Hindi translation is quite horrible, which is what I wanted to correct. You know what I'm talking about, right?
I'm trying to recollect, I'm trying to recollect.
But does the English version ever say that I'll be jumping around madly like David did? I don't remember that. But in Hindi, it says, मैं पागल के समान, that means like mad people, I will sing. Now, the point is, the moment your focus is on being mad, you've already lost the plot. For David, the focus was on God, and that is why he was dancing like that. So please remember, the moment you make the focus of worship, which is God, many of these things will fall in. These are what are you called tacit dimensions. Michael Polanyi is the gentleman whom I'm quoting here. It becomes tacit, your action, your posture and all that. And therefore, we have to make this thing clear, that worship is basically a focus on God. The focal dimension is God himself. And therefore, whatever you do, sing, your posture, your dance, your falling prostrate, your kneeling or you standing up, you're lifting up your hands, looking up, looking down. You see, the India, the world's cultures are all going to be represented in the new creation. Some of us will remove our shoes when they come to the presence of God. Some of us will put on our shoes when we come into the presence of God. So there are many different ways in which we culturally express our devotion to God. And we need to begin to see that they are all part of worship. So let me, oh, that is the song, is it? When the Spirit of the Lord comes upon my dance like David danced. This is fine. But in fact, the Hindi translation is so atrocious. And those of you, brother David Dean, when you speak to our young people in U-Egypt, please tell them, this पागल के समान नाचूगा is not really a very nice thing to say. Because your emphasis seemed to be on being a पागल. No, no, your emphasis has to be on God. When you may begin to dance like that, so that David's wife despised him in her heart and remained childless for the rest of her life. So what you are beginning to, I mean, God knew what exactly David was doing. Okay. Now, I think I don't want to say anything more. But as we go to questions, are we going to do that, Prasan?
We'll take a few questions, we have a set of questions.
You'd love to speak a little loudly?
Can you hear me now, Uncle? Is it clear? So we have a set of questions that were, we got through a survey. And we have grouped them under a few subtitles and subheadings. First, we'll have the base questions that talk about basic guidelines. We have formulated according to our understanding, you can regroup it as in when I raise those questions, Uncle. To start with the first question being like, you know, if you can share with us about the history of worship that's found in the Bible in a few words.
Usually, in fact, if you look at the Bible, particularly, we just worship, as I've already said, is focusing on God. And when you focus on God, there are several things which happen. You know, Prasan, I'm going to do one thing. One of the recent questions that came up was a very interesting reference to me, that what is the ultimate purpose of worship? Is it not soul winning? During youthful days of Mr. LT, which was about 100 years ago, probably soul winning, evangelizing, repentance, restitution, transformation were set upon. No, I want to tell you, they don't form part... No, every dimension is not even... ...and we're exposed to the allied God. So the purpose is not actually one of conversion or...
Uncle, you were off.
Yeah, I think there was a slight interruption in my internet. I think you, it's okay now, right?
Yeah, we lost a...
Did you miss anything that I said, anything, Prasan?
Few sentences we couldn't hear, it was all possible.
No, I said, the question was during my younger days, that was. It was for evangelism, for transformation, sanctification, is why we worshiped. I want to correct that, that's exactly what I said at the beginning. Worship is God orientedness. What happens to me is a fringe benefit, is something which is a result of your, our closeness to God. And that is something that I want to repeatedly emphasize. So that is the ultimate purpose of worship. And of course, many things result from worship. True worship of God, sometimes we are absolutely overcome by the presence of God, that we have not even any words to say. In fact, one of the hymns I sent to your office was a hymn which was composed in the Greek language in the year 275 AD. That is about how many years ago? Some 1700 years ago. And it begins by something like, it's a quotation from Habakkuk, chapter 2, verse 20. Let all mortal flesh keep silence. Now, silence is unfortunately not part of our worship today. Silence seems to disturb us actually. In fact, I was in a prayer meeting where the leader of the prayer said, let's go for a moment of silence. But the guitarist had to go on strumming some chord. And he was praying to God, will he not stop strumming this chord? So I do want you to see, now, don't put it up now, if I want, I'll tell you. But what I'm trying to say is worship is when you approach the presence of God, there are various responses that God's spirit kingles in you. One is to keep silent. The other could be to jump and dance. So the point therefore, if the focus is on God, the methodology of the response becomes secondary. That's why I use those two words, focal and tacit. And let not the tacit become focal. And that is really my request. Yeah. Have I touched upon or...
The history of worship from the Bible?
Yeah, from the Bible, of course, you can find a number of... No, you know, let me do one thing. Please put up that hymn, My God, How Wonderful Thou Art, I'm just going to read it for you. And that is a very interesting song written by an Anglican who became a Catholic, died at the age of 48. But Frederick William Faber captures something of, yes. Now, if you see this, let me quickly read this. If you see the first three stanzas, it is all about God. He's singing in the singular. My God, how wonderful thou art, thy majesty are bright. How beautiful thy mercy seat in depths of burning light. Wondrous are thine eternal years, O everlasting Lord. By holy angels, day and night incessantly adored. And then he comes to his first response, Oh, how I fear thee, living God, with deepest, tenderest fears, and worship thee with trembling hope and penitential tears. Now, the thing I love about this hymn is that it combines reverence with familiarity. You know, when Jesus taught us to pray, he said, Our Father, which art in heaven, our Father is familiarity, in heaven is reverence. And one of the problems that younger people have with older hymns is that it's all reverence and no familiarity. And what older people complaints have with younger people is that it's all familiarity and no reverence. And I want to shock you. I hope you don't sing this song in India. We, my wife and I, heard this in Oman, in Muscat International Church. There was a song which was horribly blasphemous, in my opinion. Heaven stoops down with a sloppy, wet kiss. Have you ever sang a song like that? I felt like walking out. I mean, that is not the kind of God is my boyfriend kind of a song. So we have to combine familiarity with reverence. Now, look at the third verse where he brings himself first. Oh, how I fear thee, living God, because of who God is, with deepest, tenderest fears, and worship thee with trembling hope and penitential tears. And then he comes to the familiarity part. Yet I may love thee to, O Lord, almighty as thou art. For thou hast stooped to ask of me the love of my poor heart. No earthly father loves like thee, no mother have so mild bears and forbears as thou hast done with me, thy sinful child. And then look at this burst into ecstasy. How wonderful, how beautiful the sight of thee must be. Thy endless wisdom, boundless power, and awesome purity. Father of Jesus, love divine, what rapture will it be? Prostrate before thy throne to lie, and gaze and gaze on thee. You know what I'm going to tell you, younger people? You are asking me how to, what kind of songs we should choose. I want to tell you, you should start writing songs. Write songs in English, write songs in your own languages. You see, the problem here is, English is not our language. Now, the reason, one of the reasons why I chose some of these songs is we can also learn English. In addition to learning theology, you also learn English by singing a song which a Carob bread Englishman writes. So that is the kind of stuff I want you to... You know, let me frankly tell you, when I was a student, this is more than 50 years ago, I read a statement of A.W. Tozer in one of his essays. He said, after your Bible, if you read the hymns of Isaac Watts and Charles Wesley, you will be a theologian. I took him seriously and I memorized some 200 hymns those days. I still remember most of them. But I tell you, they have opened my eyes to see who God is. Whereas what we sing now, in fact, when you begin to see, they do not have much content. Now, please don't mistake me, I'm not an old man finding fault with new songs written by young people. But I do want you to notice that familiarity has somehow replaced reverence. Familiarity is very important. I mean, I can call God as Father. In fact, Jesus is the husband of us, the church corporately. I may come to this a little later. Let's go to the next question, Prasan.
I think you just answered it, but I again read it. The types of songs being sung in churches, Uncle? How to choose the right songs? And second, I think what's the balance between hymners and contemporary modern songs?
And I think there was a question about bridging the gender gap, I mean, the generation gap. So I think that it's all contained in one question because some of us oldies are more hymorient. But you know, I want to tell you, if we have friends in the UK, there is a Songs of Fellowship collection, about 1100 songs, which are combination of older hymns and contemporary choruses, which have been published, which has been published by Kingsway, if I'm not mistaken, a British publisher, with accompanying music. And so Songs of Fellowship, you can just type that out, Google and try and see if you can get. And that gives, in my opinion, it gives a reasonable mixture of contemporary songs, choruses and so on, with contemporary tunes, jazzy and so on, with some solemn music and old hymns and so on. And sometime later now, I'm going to introduce to you, I think all of us are familiar with Shine, Jesus Shine. Now, Graham Kendrick is the composer. And he's one who seems to combine the two so beautifully. And that's why I have sent one more song of his, which we can see later. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Uncle. We are shifting gears here, we are moving to a little bit different scene here. It talks about the team composition. If it's the case of mainline church, it's basically about the choir. If it's an independent church, about the worship team or the worship leader. The question is criteria that God expects in a worship leader. A branch of that is, can those... Okay, the second part is, okay, you can answer the first part, I'll come with the second part later, after you answer the first part.
No, I think you better tell me the second part because I'm already formulating my answer, so...
Okay, the second one is, it's a case example based on a few denominational churches. Okay, can those who are not baptized by the Holy Spirit lead worship?
Oh, that is, yeah, that is a bit different. That we will take along with, should women cover their head in worship and so on?
Okay, I'll group it then.
I would like to, because what I want to say here is there has to be a respect for a particular tradition where you are participating in this. And each tradition, after all, going from, and let me tell you that in my younger days, I was singing like a pendulum from one church to another, looking for the perfect church. All of us have done that. Until I came to realize that even if I did find a perfect church, the moment I joined it, it will become imperfect. So I decided to choose a church and stay with it, which is what my wife and I have done. So let me start with this. One of the things, this is a thing about songs, the advantage of choir singing. What is, because of classical music, thanks to Bino Thomas, I don't know whether he's part of our group today, he's bringing classic hymns in Chennai with the help of the Kirk Choir and so on, into the focus. Because the moment you sing in parts, you sing in four parts or more, deskant and so on, you are listening to the other person. That becomes very important because that is an expression of the corporateness of the church. Just like the Spirit of God has given different gifts to the church, when I'm exercising my gift of teaching, I must also listen to somebody else exercising his gift of healing, somebody else with a word of knowledge. So we are constantly working cooperatively together. And choir singing is a very interesting way in which we are taught by good choir masters, taught that you should not sing too loudly, you should sing at that volume with that inflection of your tone, where you will blend with other voices. Where in our own family, we used to sing quartets. My wife will sing the soprano, our daughter will sing the alto, our son will sing the tenor, and I would sing the bass. And basically, when we were singing, some very often without any accompaniment, we were listening to each other. I mean, that's an amazing thing. The problem with some of our worship leaders, where the worship leader is on the stage and he has a mic in his hand unfortunately. And therefore, you can't hear anyone except the worship leader, I can't even hear myself. One of the reasons I'm looking forward to the coming of Christ is that there will be no public address system, so that we can all, we'll all be able to hear one another. And what the electronics of the new creation will be, I don't know. But some of you electronic engineers will have some work to do there. So please remember that at every stage, you know, some of these very sensitive worship leaders, I mean, I've been in all kinds of churches, I don't think that I'm biased. They deliberately stop playing instruments. And they want to hear the congregation sing. That's a marvelous way of doing it. Because after all, when you are singing a song, particularly a new chorus, which the congregation will not know, I think it's right for those who are on the stage to lead us. But to give us a time to participate in the worship by suspending all instruments is a very wonderful thing to do. So think of some creative ways, I think one of the questions was about creative ways, this is part of the creative. You do not have to fall into some rigid pattern. So the corporateness of worship, that leads me to a point, Prasan may not be in your questions. Did you notice that most of the songs choruses composed in recent times is all in the singular? Except what our dear sister sang at the beginning of the session. I was so happy that she chose that, it was in the plural. I want to tell you that there is a paucity of plural songs. You are leading corporate worship. I tell you, two weaknesses of I songs, first person singular. First of all, the composer is writing that song when he or she is coming through a particular experience. Now, if you are not going through that particular experience, it is not always possible for you to emotionally identify with that song. And therefore, when you sing I songs in a whole congregation, you are actually saying that people should be kind of tuning in to the emotion, the content of that song, which is not always easy. Now, let me give you a simple example from scripture. If you take Psalm thirty-four, it's, uh, it starts the singular, I, David's tongue. But you read through that psalm, it slowly transits into the plural. In other words, what, um, David is saying is that my understanding of God is in order to encourage you to worship this God. And which is why some of the Psalms like, um, Amletus Worship. You know, that's, uh, some songs are not even addressed to God. They are addressed to one another. This, uh, two seventy-five A.D. song, let, um, all mortal life keep silence, is not addressed to God. It is addressed to us. So, uh, please remember that we need to, uh, I'm coming back to the same song. How I address the, uh, main issue raised by the question, present, sometimes I get carried away, so.
No, Uncle, as in criteria that God expects in a worship leader and in a worship team in choirs?
Yeah, you know, of course of worship, I've said, um, what I would therefore say, I, I think I addressed that point, that even in a contemporary worship leader, when he suspends instruments, suspends the choir singing team to listen to the congregation, that will be good. And that is where the singular plural thing which I mentioned, you can make a note of it as need for, um, songs which need to blend the two, of a singular and plural. In fact, my booklet on the Trinity, which is now out of print, but I think after the lockdown is lifted, we may get a second edition, Reflections on the Trinity. I have used a sentence, we have brought the individualism of the shopping mall into the sanctuary. We brought the individualism of the shopping mall into the sanctuary. Because when we are all singing I songs, we are only saying, I'm related to God. But what about our relationship to one another? After all, that is part of corporate worship. So please remember, uh, which is why I think it is the writing of songs which becomes very important, choice of songs becomes important. Uh, use more of scripture because scripture blends some of things very beautifully. So you can do that. Okay, present, next.
Uh, the fourth and fifth question, like how interactive should the worship music session should be? I think this is coming from a presentation angle. The next question is, uh, difference between worshiping God and worshiping worship?
Well, you have answered the question, I mean, that's a rhetorical question. Worshiping worship is idolatry. Worshiping God is what worship is, so that's all my answer, I don't have to say anything more. But let me come back to the other point, uh, where, could you repeat your previous point you said?
How interactive should the wor- worship music session should be?
Right, I have mentioned it, but you know what we must try and do is to get a participant, you know, some of our charismatic churches, they do something very nice, that they sometimes call for their choice of songs, which is another way you can make it interactive, because a certain person is coming to the worship with the certain need or certain praise, in her heart, his heart, and they want to sing that particular song, I mean, that's wonderful. So you can make that interactive. And of course, in, um, very often, uh, in choir, because that's why we have what is called descant, where all the parts sing the harmony, the melody. And the sopranos who have a higher range of voice, they sing the descant. Now, that's a very beautiful thing, it's very enjoyable when you hear that and, uh, even a bass singer joins the harmony. And someone who has a higher range of voice, uh, sings the descant. And so, I mean, there are very creative ways you can think about it, I don't want to, uh, kind of, give a kind of a syllabus on how to combine these. But please remember, every time you come to, uh, lead a worship, you are, you are, um, maybe, present, may I anticipate this question, it is there in your list. How does a worship leader prepare?
It is, it is in the sequence, it is in the sequence, you can take it up, Uncle, right now.
I take it up now.
Yeah.
That's exactly, see, what I've written here, I wrote, I printed out your list of questions, the earlier list of questions. And I wrote something like this, that one preparation is definitely before God. The worship leader, along with the worship team, sensitize your conscience and sensitize your spirit to, uh, be what the Spirit of God is trying to say, let me say something to you, to encourage you in this. Of course, I am invited to speak in a number of charismatic churches and one of the things I do, because I, I very carefully choose these churches. Even through the worship songs that they sing, God confirms to me that the topic with which I've come prepared to speak is the topic that really wants me to speak. I mean, that's wonderful. So what I'm saying is, there is something natural and supernatural about it. There is something in which, and all of God's dealings with us is a combination. Please remember this, I said it in all my sessions earlier. It's a combination, see, even Jesus was an ordinary extraordinary person. The extraordinary, extraordinary people belong to Bollywood, they don't belong to Christianity. So please remember that we are thinking of a combination of the ordinary, extraordinary. So your particular day, the way the Lord is leading you could be through your own taste, your preference for music. I don't want you to neglect that. But at the same time, God can give you a word of knowledge, a word of wisdom, uh, some input. Or you can even, when you are leading the worship in the actual worship service, God may ask you to maybe stop and ask a question to the congregation, why not? So be, um, bring a spontaneity which does not disturb the order of worship. You see, in one Corinthians fourteen, uh, where of course, speaking in tongues is all mentioned. Paul's main purpose for writing that chapter is in the last verse of one Corinthians fourteen. Let everything be done decently and in order. So that's what you begin to see, so, uh, whatever you do, uh, you abide by the tradition of the church where you are singing. Because one of the things I've learned after this long journey of my life is that every tradition has something to be commended and something which is not commendable. Take all the commendable part of all traditions. I mean, you will have a wonderful mix. And sensitize yourself as a young leaders to this. And, uh, I'm going to say something which was not in one of your questions, uh, present. You know, some worship teams consider leading worship as a kind of their job. So when they're invited in a meeting, once the so-called praise and worship time is over, they pack up their guitars and drums and leave. I find it terribly insulting. I find it condescending. I find it disrespectful of all the various gifts of the Spirit that God has given to the church. So don't ever get into this kind of teens, where you are such a specialist worship leader, that once the worship time is over, you leave and leave the poor sermon and Bible reading and all to lesser mortals. I, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, good, it was there in the question. The next one is like, uh, how do you transition from personal time with God to a corporate worship leading an entire congregation?
Now, I'm going to tell you something which is somewhat revolting, but it has got some amazing thing. This was one young Christian man told me that when a Christian girl sings to Jesus, I love you, I can prob- she can probably identify with her sentiments. But when I say, man, I sing to Jesus, I love you, I feel rather queasy because it almost sounds homosexual. Now, I do want you to remember, my C.S. Lewis puts it beautifully. He says the church is corporately feminine. So that when we sing these songs like Loving God, let us try to use the plural. Because the singular use of love, because now I know that, um, when we use the word love, we do not mean erotic love. But the fact of the matter, ma'am, the, my experience with talking to Muslim friends is that whenever they hear the word love, they always think of the erotic. And so I think we need to begin to see that when we talk about being the bride of Christ, we are talking about the corporate identity of the church. So that it will be good to, whenever we sing songs of this, uh, love songs, let us make them we songs. And I have even tried to, for example, uh, what is that chorus? We want to, I want to see Jesus, how does that song start?
Lifted eye.
No, no, no. Open my eyes, Lord, I want to see Jesus. Now, a song like that can be sung in the singular as well as in the plural. In Canada, when, um, I was going to speak on the church and the worship leader was leading it in the singular, and I had the freedom just to walk up to him and say, please sing it one more time in the plural. Open our eyes, Lord, we want to see Jesus, why not? So try to mix the singular and the plural. I tell you, our worship times will be so enriched if we make this one big change in our singing. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we're moving to, uh, a place where in some churches, the worship leader shunned from quoting any scripture verse when they lead worship, and, uh, how do we deal with such instances?
Who shuns them?
The church, particular church pastor, or the ones who invited them to lead worship, they asked them?
Well, I, I didn't expect this part of, I didn't see that question. Because I'm from, uh, the state of Tamil Nadu where most of you are from, where even when praying to God, we go chapter and verse, just in case God has forgotten. So we are reminding him. Now, let me frankly tell you, um, I won't make it a rule, but I would also like worship songs to be made in our own words. Now, if you read the Gospels, you'll be shocked to see that Jesus quoted scripture only to the devil and to the Pharisees. To everybody else, he spoke in common language. That's why they heard him gladly. While I, therefore, I would not shun, uh, prohibit a worship team from using scripture, I would say that scriptural thoughts and words can be put in normal words, in your contemporary music, you can write it in your lyrics, why not? I hope by this time, you younger people realize that the great need is to write songs. Terribly great need to write songs. Where we can incorporate some of these things. Yes, present?
Okay, Uncle, you're getting into the emotional part of the act, the next question, uh, talking about the World Cup finals, India and Sri Lanka, April second, two thousand and eleven. By the forty-two, when the song One Day Mother was played, everybody got goosebumps, I was watching the match. So the question is, uh, by making people cry, comma, voice modulation, usage of certain chord progressions to raise goosebumps, usage of mood, lights, smoke effects, and also with regards to slowing down the accompaniments based on how voice modulation of the wor- worship leader happens. What is your response to using emotional trigger in worship?
Now, I want to be very careful here. You know, let me go to the scripture. If you look at Deuteronomy six, verse five, God is saying to his people through Moses, you shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, and all your strength, that is what the Old Testament says. When Jesus is quoted, uh, in Mark twelve, verse thirty, and of course, Mark is writing in Greek, he is saying heart, soul, mind and strength. But, uh, yes, but if you actually go to the Hebrew word, what is translated as strength in English from Deuteronomy six, five, is not strength at all. Is the word very, V E R Y. Now, you can't say worship God with all your very, I mean, you'll send me to English language school. Because very is an adverb, you don't use all your very. It is only once more in the New Test, in the Old Testament, in Second Kings, chapter twenty-three, I think, when it talks about King Josiah, who loved the Lord with all his heart, all his soul and all his very. Now, how I understand this word very is with the totality of your personality. And so your personality, um, comprises your intellect, your capacity to think, your emotion, your capacity to feel, and your will, your capacity to do. One of the things, I want to say this very carefully, but one of the things I'm beginning to see is that as we grow closer to God, both individually and corporately, you will find that the distinction between intellect, emotion and will is slowly erased. I, for example, because we are all constitutionally very different, some of us are very emotional, some of us are very intellectual, some of our, uh, things, people who want to get things done, which is fine. But you begin to see that there is an interplay between all these parts of your personality. I, for my sake, I find my emotion being, uh, driven by my intellect. See, one of the reasons why I chose a song like Frederick William Faber, if you see that, you will see that the emotion follows the intellect. You'll be the mind, you begin to imagine what God is. And then you feel, your feeling comes in. It may not necessarily be like that for everyone. So your question is very important. Let me frankly tell you, let me go back to a very interesting verse from Genesis, chapter three, verse sixteen, which God is, uh, saying to the woman after they have rebelled against God. The first part is understandable to all mothers. I'll greatly increase your pain in childbearing. But look at the second part of that verse, what does God say to the woman? Your desire will be husband and he will rule over you. Now, if you ask a wife, whether it's a good statement or a bad statement or a mixture, who will answer be? It looks like a mixture, desire for the husband seems to be nice, but his ruling over you is not so nice. But I want to tell you that that word desire actually means manipulative desire. So if I were to translate that part of, uh, verse sixteen in today's English, it is saying to the woman, uh, God is saying to the woman, you'll use your feminine charm to control and manipulate your husband. And the dumb macho man will not know how to respond except by dominating you. So domination can come from weakness, it can come from strength as well. I hope you get the point. Look at children, how they know how to manipulate one parent against the other. So manipulation is part, is one of the big symptoms of the fallen world. Which is why the cross, as I've said elsewhere, is God choosing to lose control over his creation and allow his creatures to crucify his son. That is why the cross confuses the devil. He does not know whether to send Jesus to the cross or whether to keep Jesus from going to the cross. And so worship leaders have a tendency to control the congregation. Please bring your, uh, control instinct before God, before you, uh, lead worship. That the Spirit of God inspire you as to what is the particular emphasis that you should give to, uh, the people who are listening. That, that is a very safe way of doing this. And please, um, choose your songs which will appeal to the intellect, appeal to your emotion, even appeal to the will. Can you put up that last song which I, uh, sent, uh, which is Beauty for Brokenness? Now, this is by Graham Kendrick, uh, no, no, not this one, uh, Beauty for Brokenness. I sent it separately, no. You know, Graham Kendrick is the guy who composed, um, Shine Jesus Shine. But this particular song, he composed for the twenty-fifth anniversary of T F Fund. T F Fund is an, a Christian- Tear Fund is a Christian NGO in the UK, the Evangelical Alliance to Relief Fund. Have you been able to locate that song? I sent it via separate email. President?
They're pulling it out, Uncle.
Oh, good. Yeah, can you make it a little bigger? Now, you see, one of your earlier questions was during my younger days, whether we were worshiping for this thing. Now this, Graham Kendrick for Tear Fund. See how he begins, Beauty for Brokenness, Hope for Despair. Lord, in the suffering, this is our prayer. Maybe we could sing this even, you can get the music with all chords and all that on the internet. And during this pandemic, we could sing this. Bread for the children, justice, joy, peace. Sun, rise to sunset, your kingdom increase. Shelter for fragile lives, our migrant labors. Cures for their ills, work for their craftsmen, trade for their skills. All of us are working from home now. Land for the dispossessed, rights for the weak. Voices to plead the cause of those who can't speak. And this one, God of the poor is the actual chorus. God of the poor, friend of the weak, give us compassion, we pray. Melt our cold hearts, let tears fall like rain. Change, change our love from a spark to a flame. But it's a direct appeal to the emotion. Then look at the next stanza. Refuge from cruel wars, heavens from fear. Cities for sanctuary, freedoms to share. Peace to the killing fields, scorched earth to green. Christ for the bitterness, his cross for the pain. Rest for the ravaged earth, he's talking about the environment. Oceans and streams plundered and poisoned our future, our dreams. Lord, end our madness, carelessness, and greed. Make us content with the things that we need. Lighten our darkness, breathe on this flame until your justice burns brightly again. Until the nations learn of your ways, seek your salvation, and bring you their praise. Brilliant. Now, this is the kind of, see, let me suggest some people to you. Steve Green in the US. Keith and Christine Getty in the UK. Graham Kendrick in the UK. Now, these are some of the people whose songs I have come to love very much. In Christ Alone, for example. You see, because they are songs which are written with your senses in society. So you are able to connect some of these things, which will give you some ideas to write your own. And so let me, my final conclusion is that do not manipulate. But you know, words of a song like this would, on the basis of the Bible truths, justice today, I think in our country, those are the two things which are really missing. And I mean, when I sing this song, I'm deeply moved. And nobody needs to manipulate me as I think over the song.
Danny Anan, you can post the link for that song, people are asking me personally. So we'll move to the next question, Uncle. I think you anyways concluded with do not manipulate. I think that answers most of the points asked in the question. This next question is about worship team dress code, cardinals, what to wear when you are in front, your posture, your offstage behavior, your attitude while leading worship.
Can men wear earrings? Can they have tattoos? Can they wear toned jeans? Depends on where you sing. I mean, let me frankly tell you, I'm very happy that you have approached me to do this. I feel very honored. But I remember when I was in Arzadam in two young people, a young man and a young woman, both Nagas. They came to me, they were from the, from Wyman. And they belonged to a music group called Blood and Thunder. Now, Wyman is quite contemporary, but even they could not stand this Blood and Thunder. So they thought LT will give them a hearing, so they came. I sat them down. In fact, I recently met one of them in Nagaland, I mean, that is refreshing. And you know what I told them? I said, don't change your music just because of older people. But you are aiming this at younger people. Your lyrics should not be Christian lyrics. You know, there's one question, can we sing secular songs? I would think you should write not secular songs, but songs which are not explicitly Christian, which are to contemporary music. If you want rock and all that, you, I wanted to go to Danny, who's part of the Jem's movement in Ranchi in Jharkhand. He'll give you some ideas for which he has been shunned by people. I am one of those people with whom he can share frankly. And I told this Bambi and what's his name. I told this couple, this young people, you write lyrics accompanying this music, raising only questions, not answers. And the answer can be only Jesus. Why don't you do that? Jesus asks 173 questions in the Gospels. But we only underline answers without knowing what the questions are. I think we have to learn to ask questions. And that is what young people will enjoy, write lyrics like that. And that can be, your accompaniment can be whatever, and that need not be in the context of a church, where I think, I'm sure certain churches require certain decorum, and we have to respect that. Certain churches may require their women to cover their heads, please do that. So I think, you know, that's one of the things we learned. See, after all, what does, what did Jesus mean when he told his disciples that you should love one another? Is we should accept the traditions of one another, not necessarily to try to change them. But when you are in their company, that you are respecting them is an amazing way to express love. So please remember, and therefore I won't go, but don't ever use any of these things as a means of manipulation or as a means of even attraction. You know, in some churches in the West, try to do this in order to attract young people. That makes your Sunday service almost entertainment. I don't think we should go to that level. Your worship service should be for worship. And there, of course, you can use various ways, and they're all equally creative. We are made in the image of God. And where without compromising reverence for God, you are able to combine worship. And then you do use contemporary music for your outreach to people, outreach to the younger generation. Where you can even sing along with other secular songs, jazz bands and whatever, rock bands, in which you wiggle your way in because they like your music. I mean, this is what Danny does. Danny in Rancha, I don't know how many of you are in touch with Jem's, Augustine Javakumar's group. And if you are interested, younger people, get in touch with Danny. And he's got a whole lot of converts from this down and outer group. All addicted to all kinds of things, alcohol, pornography and all that. They're all part of his church. They would never come to a conventional church. So you can think of it, I mean, there are amazing ways in which you can combine these things, yeah.
Now comes the yes or no questions, Uncle. Should the women cover their heads when they lead worship? Yeah.
No, I've told you, I mean, some churches very strongly feel that we should, women should cover their heads, although I have, my opinion is different. And of course, their women should not even teach and so on, and we would respect that. So because we are an international group here, let us respect that. And so I would not say just to show yourself that you don't believe in women, not, you don't believe in women covering. So when they, that church invites you to lead in worship, or you must first get their permission. The ladies in our worship team are not used to covering their heads, so will it be okay? You know, loving your people who disagree, I was jokingly telling a group, our prayer group, I was telling, you know, love your enemies does not mean you should hug them. Like Rahul Gandhi hugged the Prime Minister in the Roksabaar. Love your enemies means you care for them, you show concern for them, you respect their views. That's what it means. So even within the Christian church, loving traditions with which you disagree means you tell them plainly that our worship team, our worship team has ladies, and they do not cover their heads. We wear contemporary jeans and cats and so on and so forth. I mean, so, see, let me frankly tell you, because I was, let me frankly tell you that my input into the scriptures was in the Brethren Assembly in Bombay. Although I was worshiping in a mother's church, most of my biblical input came from there. But look at the journey that Brethren Assembly itself has taken. The oldest Brethren Assembly is the Plymouth Brethren in the UK. No musical instruments. Because in the New Testament, there are no musical instruments, no musical. Then they said, the organ can be played. Then they said, the piano. Then even now, the abominable guitar has also become part of their worship. I mean, so things are changing. So I want you to see that we are all on a journey here. So taking some words from scripture and saying that this is what you should do, I don't think that gets much haste.
Okay, Uncle, moving on. The question that I earlier asked, you asked me to plumb along with the head covering question.
Yeah.
Can those who are not baptized by the Holy Spirit lead worship? Okay, I'll give the case example here. In certain churches, the worship team consists of musicians who play for both Christian songs and in the entertainment field. And many people have questions regarding them being in the worship team as they are considered people without Holy Spirit baptism. Going on, in some churches, only those who are recognized as being baptized by the Holy Spirit, within brackets, in other words, those who speak in tongues according to their definition, are allowed to lead worship. So this is the basis for the question.
You know, let me frankly tell you, of course, even about what it means to be filled by the Spirit. The church, I mean, during our 2000 era history, we have all held different views on what it means to be baptized. In fact, when you read about Paul in 1 Corinthians 12, "We are baptized into one body by one spirit." He's not talking about speaking in tongues. He's talking about becoming a member of the Body of Christ. And I mean, this is, I'm now quoting from the church where speaking in tongues, interpretation of tongues, word of wisdom, word of knowledge, all were being exercised. To that church, Paul is saying this. So the earliest view of being baptized in the Spirit was not about speaking in tongues at all. But that does not mean that I do not believe in tongues, in fact, I do. But I do practice tongues in a very different way from normal Pentecostal churches. But I think if those churches want you to come and worship, you will have to clearly say that we will have people who sing in secular music groups. And if you do not want them, then we will not be able to come and sing as, that's all. Please do not try to promote yourself, that's not necessary. And at the same time, we have to broaden the mindset of our churches. We must also help them to see that there are people who come in all shapes and sizes and all colors. They're all part of the Kingdom of God. And who are we and favor others, and we have no business.
Okay, Uncle, moving to the questions on conflicts. Because these are practical questions a lot of people put forth, basically because they might be going through those. One is various worship teams competing with one another to the point of not acknowledging one another. The focus is on outperforming the other worship team. How do we resolve this?
No, no, this is horrible carnality. I mean, what is the difference between this and people paying to get themselves elected as bishops? I mean, it's the same. Only thing, you are doing it differently, that's all. What they need is a good dose of what it means to be a Christian. Now, in fact, an earlier question, which I thought I answered in a different way. Worshiping worship and worshiping God. This is a good indication of worshiping worship. I'm going to say this, when I saw this question in the second list that Mega sent me, I remembered a certain interpretation. Some of you, I think, again, it's an older person's field, but some of you young people should become more familiar with these older people, like Oswald Chambers. You Google his name, Oswald Chambers, you will get his daily readings. Now, Oswald Chambers never published any book. He died suddenly of a ruptured appendix in Cairo, in Egypt. He was chaplain to the Royal Army in the First World War. And his wife, who had noted down all that her husband had said, published it. Now, in this collection called My Atmost For His Highest, he takes this rather obscure incident in the Old Testament, where you remember three mighty men risked their lives to bring water from the well of Bethlehem. David says, I want to drink this water. So they risked their lives, went into salt's camp, brought the water. And what did, what did David do? He pours it out. And Chambers picks it up and he says, "There are certain things which are meant only for God, and you have to learn to pour it out before God." Long ago, in our EU group in Calcutta, I remember speaking on how to handle praise. If you learn that, you have learned everything. And sometimes when a preacher has preached a good sermon and somebody greets him at the door and says, that was a good sermon. And the poor preacher who does not know how to accept compliment graciously, he says, the devil told me that before you told me. That's rubbish. If you preached a good sermon, you have worked on it. I mean, you take the credit for it. But, you know, let me tell you, this pouring out to God does not happen in public. It happens in private. That night, when you're done, you're about to sleep and you're gloating on your achievements of the day, that is where you have to learn to pour it out before God. And that is a discipline all of us have to learn, whatever our work is in God's kingdom. And I think that is something, they don't have this worship team, they don't have any business leading God's people in worship. I mean, that will be my straight word of judgment. This is not conflict. I mean, do we have to? See, let me frankly tell you that gifts of the Spirit, natural as well as supernatural gifts, there are 20 gifts that Paul speaks about. But every, you know, in Romans 12, 1 Corinthians 12, 14, and Ephesians 4. Before that, what does he say? He talks about unity. Ephesians 4, one God, one Lord, one Spirit. Romans 12, be sober minded, don't think of yourself more highly than you ought to think. Then only talks about gifts. And 1 Corinthians 12, gift is given to everybody for the common good. I think what we need, see, let me, I was not planning to say this. Worship teams must be students of the Bible, not learning some tricks, some techniques, no. When you become a true student of the Bible and you begin to see what it means to be a Christian, then you'll know how to resolve conflict, and conflict, you back off. You see, let me frankly tell you, now, I talked about getting elected as bishop or whatever. I mean, Paul says that being a bishop is a good thing. Only paying to get elected is a problem. The whole thing here is your identity should not be in your being a bishop or a worship leader or a Bible study leader. I am introduced, you know, some places, LT is a speaker. I pointed to the loudspeaker, I said, that is a speaker. I'm a human being who can speak. When I grow older, I may not be able to speak. That doesn't mean I've lost my identity. You see, let me frankly tell you, this is a much larger problem, President. The problem is you're seeking your identity in your gifts. People going around saying, I'm a prophet, I'm an apostle, let others say that. Identity, it comes out of relationship. I'm going back to the Trinity. How did Jesus introduce the persons of the Trinity? Father and Son. The Father derives his identity from the Son and the Son from the Father. What do you ladies do when you go to a home where a new baby is born? Her nose is just like the mother's, that's identity. You know, I'm telling you, what we, all of us need You know, I'm telling you, what we, all of us need, all of us to whom God has given dangerous gifts. All of us, we need to read Revelation 3 verse 12. Will you please read that, the second part of that verse 12? This is not supposed to be a Bible study, but whenever you talk about this kind of, it's a reward given to the church in Philadelphia against to which Jesus did not have any complaints. It's something quite amazing. Preston, could you get it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm opening it, uncle.
Yeah.
Because I was, I was going through the next set of questions of Revelation. I wasn't, I was handling two tabs.
David, you seem to have got it, why don't you unmute and read it? Unmute.
I, I've got it, I've got it, Revelation 12.
Let David read, yeah.
The one, sorry, 3:12, the one who conquers, I will make him a pillar in the temple of my God. Never shall he go out of it and I will write on him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, the new Jerusalem, which comes down from God out of heaven and my own new name.
Now, look at those three names. They are, that should be your source of identity. The first name, I'll write on him, on her, the name of my God. So my first identity, your first identity, I'm a son of God, I'm a daughter of God. What is the second identity? I'll write on him the name of the city of my God, the new Jerusalem, which is coming down out of heaven. That is from Revelation chapter 21, verses 1 and 2, that is a church beautifully dressed for her husband. So if the name of the church is written on me, then what is my identity today? You're giving me the honor of speaking here. I am your brother in Christ, you are my brothers and sisters in Christ, nothing more than that. That's what I told this church in Malaysia, where the pastor's wife introduced me as a speaker. I said, I'm not a speaker, I'm your brother in Christ, you are my brothers and sisters in Christ. And what is the third name? My new name, Jesus says, I'll write on him my new name. We are the bride, he is the bridegroom, just as a bride takes her identity from the bridegroom from the time they are married, we take. So all identity is relational. The moment your identity comes from your gifts, particularly in music or in prophecy or whatever, they are all glorious gifts God has given for the common good. But the moment your identity comes from them, and I want to tell young people here in this group, you learn this one lesson, my dear daughters and sons, you will be a blessing to the church. Because we always, this is our problem. We are trying to get our identity in our position, in our educational qualification, in the money we earn now. And here in the worship team, your gift, you're guitarist, you are the bass guitarist, lead guitarist, and you are the, what, keyboard, whatever. Yes, Preston?
Okay, next question is on choosing a song based on the life of a lyricist or composer. There are two subparts to this question, uncle. The first is, should I be concerned about singing songs of artists who have controversial theological doctrines? Example, the Church of Latter Day Saints, their music is really good, can it choose and sing their songs? Second is, I'm trying to name them, okay, because anyways, come group, should I, should I sing songs?
Let me address this question, Preston, from two angles. You know, Church of the Latter Day Saints are Mormons. Rabbi Zakaria spoke in the Mormon Tabernacle and got himself a lot of hate mail. He was the first evangelical to speak after D.L. Moody in the 19th century. But if I'm not mistaken, the songs that they sing in the Utah Tabernacle Choir, I mean, they are actually our songs. In fact, I want to tell you something, and this is not to answer your question that you may sing, but in America, there is a fruitful dialogue that is being carried out between evangelical Christians and Mormons to bring them back onto theological rails. And one of those who's doing this is Paul Copan, a good friend of mine who used to work for Rabbi Zakaria's ministries. When we were students, there used to be a group called, what was it called now? They had a magazine, some of us older people, do you remember? It was called, I forgot the name of this, Herbert Armstrong. How many of you remember Herbert Armstrong? Do you know that now Herbert Armstrong's people have completely renounced their wrong doctrine and come into the right doctrine because of continuous persuasion by God's people? So that is possible. So I don't want to write them off, but doctrines which are definitely wrong, which are communicated in the lyrics, I think you should avoid. Now, what about people who had moral psychological problems, lyricists? One of the songs I wanted to send to you was this amazing hymn written by William Cowper, William Cowper, which is an English poet, he was also Christian, but he was a nervous wreck. In fact, he once hired a cab, taxis, those days were only cabs, horse drawn cabs. And he wanted to go to the banks of the River Thames and jump into the river and commit suicide. And it was foggy and the cab was around, went round and round and came back to his house. And he wrote this hymn called, what? Mama, what is the name of that song? About the mystery of God's will. I forgot the first line, but there are many other lines. And you see, he writes it when he's going to commit suicide and God rescues him, and there are people like that. And the other point, let me frankly tell you, how many of us can be said to be morally perfect so that only our songs can be sung? I don't, I don't want to claim that credit for myself. So we are all people on a journey as long as we are seeking to walk with God, overcoming our failures, weaknesses, sins by walking continuously with God, I think. I remember that, hey, we have gone beyond our time, Preston.
No, we have ninety minutes, we have eleven minutes more, uncle.
Oh, very good, okay.
Okay, the second part, okay, you touched the moral part, like, no, because certain groups, because in most churches, the youngsters, I mean, teens, young adults are the ones who select the songs to be sung in churches, which the older generation might not be even aware of. Because these are the generation who listen to Hillsong and Bethel music. And when, in the last two years, when we see what happens during the Christmas celebration is a naked cowboy comes on stage and he dances, the kind of allegories used on stage is different. And the worship leaders in certain these groups I mentioned, some of them are LGBT promoters, they are practicing homosexuals themselves, they call themselves goddess, etc. So when they write songs, out of ten songs, they write three songs are really beautiful, yes, but seven songs are totally different, they are off. So when, as youngsters would select these songs to sing in our churches, how do we go about it? If I could rephrase the whole thing correctly.
You know, let me suggest something very different to you about food offered to idols. Paul has three very different, four different approaches. I'm not going to give you a long lecture on that. But 1 Corinthians 8, 1 Corinthians 10, Romans 14 are three chapters which you can read. Paul says, in one sense, every individual Christian has a freedom. See, if you went to the Corinthian meat market to buy beef, that beef must have been offered to some idol. But he says, you give thanks and eat, that is one. But he says, if there is someone else in your church group who has come from that background, for whom eating that beef offered to an idol is sacrilegious, in order not to stumble that person, you should not eat. So I think there is something very important about, see, it is not the worship leader's agenda. It has to be about, see, the worship team should never try to impose their agenda on others. Now, let me frankly tell you, I strongly believe that homosexuality is morally condemned in the scriptures. Although I am not against decriminalization of Article 377. But I do want to tell you that if the LGBTQ, to speak to LGBTQ people about leading them to Christ, let them do that. But they should not kind of say that we should sing even to people, to churches where they'd consider homosexuality sinful in order to convert their understanding of ethics that, see, God accepting homosexuals as persons and approving their lifestyle are two different things. If Jesus was here, he would surely accept homosexuals, but he would not approve their lifestyle. That is the point. And that's what we also, when we are witnessing to LGBTQ community, and that's exactly what we have to do in the UESA, one of the papers I've written recently is on how to witness to the LGBTQ community. And I've mentioned this, there is a pastoral way of dealing with, dealing with such people. But a worship team which has practical, practicing homosexuals who want to come and promote homosexuality in churches, I don't think any church, believing church would like to allow, see, which is why I brought out this men wearing rings and wearing torn jeans and tattoos, they belong to a very different category than something that has to do with a moral lifestyle. Does it answer your question?
It does.
Have I left out something?
It does, it does. But again, it kind of raises a lot of other questions on different levels, but it's not directly connected to this session, so I'll park it. Can a worship leader, okay, it's already addressed, weigh in repetition in worship, uncle? You addressed a part of it earlier, but these are practical things, a lot of people are doing it and people are seeing it and like, no, how do we learn it, it's Bible tells not to do it, yes. But these are some things that we go through, we see it.
You seem to be answering your own question.
Because is it required is a question that there is, I want to pose it to you.
Okay, now, you see, the first song I refer to by William Faber has seven stanzas. But we sing one line seven times. And that is not the point. You see, the whole problem is, no, I'm not against repetition, let me tell you. I have found repetition sometimes helpful. But this is exactly where you, one of the earliest questions that we answered was about the choir leader, we talked about preparation of the choir leader. You see, the choir leader should be sensitive to what God is saying. Simply repeating it in order to fill time or psych people into a mood of worship, I think that is manipulation, straight. Which is why when I gave you my own experience is that I allow my emotions to be led by my mind. When my mind is exposed to the truth of God, I find myself emotionally moved. And I find that's very safe to do that. And so I will not rule out repetition per se. But I think there are some places where a repetition is helpful. For example, I mean, look at that seven stanza song that I sang, that I read for you. I mean, you have to read each line, each sentence, stanza three times in order for you to understand what Frederick William Faber has said.
Okay.
So I want to totally reject repetition, sometimes even the music is so nice. You know, Graham Kendrick's song, A Christmas Season, some years ago, what is it called? Heavenly Babe, how does it go? How many of you know that song? It's supposed to be a contemporary song, but it's probably too old for some of you youngsters. But, no, those are songs in which your music itself requires repetition. Or Meekness and Majesty, Manhood and Deity, Imperfect Harmony, The Man Who Is God, that's also Graham Kendrick.
Seven King.
And that is a repetition, the chorus is a repetition. And even in older songs, when a chorus is meant to repeat a certain point in order to bring emphasis, please do that. But not this is the matter, of course. Is there any question left?
I'm just, because certain of those question you ruled out, I answered using the word, those are carnal stuff, so I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Spiting also.
Don't waste your time on.
I'm not repeating those questions. Okay. You anyways touched on David Dance in the beginning, uncle. Right now, what's happening is, just like action songs which you teach for children in churches, there are certain places in which worship leaders kind of orchestrate the whole thing for the church in telling them, this is how you should move. And this is especially happening in Tamil Christian world of late, in the last five, six years.
It's happening everywhere, yeah.
So you will use on.
And they will say, where the spirit of the Lord is, there is freedom. I mean, that's a quote, was quoted out of context. But the freedom also means freedom not to dance. Why do you only say freedom is only to dance? Freedom includes the freedom not to dance. And for those of us whose joints are creaking, who will not be able to dance, we don't mind looking at people dancing and enjoying it, although we ourselves may not be able to dance. So I, I think, I will be very careful, again, I think it comes back to the same point, Preston, which we talked about, about the sensitivity of the congregation. You know, you know why these questions are coming up? Because we are, you are probably raising questions which are common to worship groups, which go from singing in one church to another church, am I correct?
Yeah.
What I would strongly encourage church leaders is to get young people of their own church to do worship for their own church only. That would be wonderful, because they know exactly what are their, what is the wavelength and so on. And they can bring in everything and they can actually help older people to grow up also. I mean, so this kind of, this professional worship teams going from place to place. I personally do not buy it really. In fact, there's some other churches in which I participate, charismatic churches, are all churches which have their own worship teams. Only when a very famous worship leader comes into town, they join with other worship teams of other churches and they have a concert in the city or so. But that is something different from what we are talking about. Am I correct?
Yep. Okay, the last question, because we have a couple of ones, we'll have one question or one more question if you have time. The one question is about music being used to drive away evil spirits. The person has quoted the David playing the harp to drive away evil spirit from Saul because, but here, the, the flip side is, once when David was playing, the evil spirit left. But the other time when he was playing, Saul actually took a spear and tried to kill them.
Absolutely, yeah, 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 so.
So you're talking on that.
You must quote the other verse to them, that's all.
So does music have any role to play in it, is that, because people are saying that as a music by.
I think this, we are reducing everything to techniques. In fact, what is his name? Michael Green, Michael Green is an ordained Anglican pastor in the UK. I mean, he is in his eighties. He has written a lot about casting out demons because he has a deliverance ministry. I Believe in Satan's Downfall is a book that he wrote. And there he says, Satan is not, what does he say? Satan is not death. That means you do not have to raise your voice to cast out demons. I like, I like that, because some people think that if you want to cast out a demon, you have to really shout, because he does not hear properly. And Michael Green, who has written this book, I Believe in Satan's Downfall, he says Satan is not death, you don't have to shout. The power of, the power that you have to cast out demons comes from elsewhere, comes from God. So it doesn't come from, the same thing applies to music. I mean, let us not reduce to techniques, as I told you. I mean, let us not reduce to techniques as I told you, I've told you a hundred times.
Okay, Uncle. I think that brings us to the close, Uncle.
You know, I'm going to quote that hymn which William Cowper wrote when his coach went round and brought him to his place. It begins like this. God moves in mysterious ways, his wonders to perform. He plants his footsteps in the sea and rides upon the storm. Deep in unfathomable minds of never hailing skill. He treasures up his bright designs and works his sovereign wills. He fearful saints, fresh courage take the clouds use so much dread. Are big with mercy and shall break in blessings on your head. Judge not the world lord by feeble sense, but trust him for his grace. Behind the frowning providence, he hides a smiling face. His purposes will ripen fast and holding every hour. The bud may have a bitter taste, but sweet will be the flower. Blind unbelief is sure to err and scan his work in vain. God is his own interpreter and he will make it plain, marvelous song. See, that is the kind of stuff you intersperse with your chorus singing or whatever. At a time of a pandemic like this, brings everything together.
Okay, Uncle, we come to the end. So your wrap-up points based on all the questions that you answered. If you want to close up with any, any parting words that you have to leave today for the people like you.
You want me to wrap up?
Yeah, if you can.
I mean, we went all over the place.
I know.
Can't be wrapped up. Olden days, we used to have a whole doll. You can put it in the road.
Yeah, because questions went everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Uncle. Thank you, Uncle.
Welcome. It was so lovely to see so many familiar people. I like this kind of a live session rather than sitting in front of a computer and recording your talk. God bless you and.